Evening, everyone. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a repeat and justice for all.
Sandy, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick.
Here.
Trustee Sheehan.
Here.
Trustee Casero.
Here.
Trustee Lotner.
Here.
Trustee Zora.
Here.
Trustee Seidel.
Here.
President DeCipio.
Here.
A quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. Moving on to public participation of agenda-related items only, would anyone care to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Sandy?
The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows: A, approval of the minutes, 1, Village Board meeting August 27, 2019; 2, Village Work Session, September 10, 2019; B, action, zoning application number 2019-02, rezoning of 630 Beach Avenue; map amendment request, motion to approve an ordinance rezoning 630 Beach Avenue to the R4 multifamily residence district; C, action, SCADA system upgrades, motion 1 to accept the proposal from Energenics in an amount of $16,100; and 2, to authorize the village manager to execute the contract document; D, action, motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the Finance Committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers; and E, action, motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and October 22, 2019, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on October 22, 2019.
Motion to approve consent agenda is presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, call the roll.
Trustee Messick.
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan.
Yes.
Trustee Casero.
Yes.
Trustee Lotner.
Yes.
Trustee Zora.
Yes.
Trustee Seidel.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. Next up, village manager, Julia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I have two items to report this evening, neither of which are included in your board packet. The first item is regarding Westchester Sewer Sanitary Project. As you know, that the extent of this work goes down Edgewood Avenue in LaGrange Park. The plans are that Westchester will be paving Edgewood weather permitting this Saturday. If not, they will try again on Monday. There is some rain in the forecast. The second item I wanted to report on is that staff will be presenting the board with a report on the fleet leasing topic that we discussed in the past at the October Work Session. That meeting is on October 8. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Julia. Administration Committee, trustee Seidel.
I have a few items to report tonight. The village's annual cleanup day will be held on Saturday, October 19. The entire village will be collected on this day. Acceptable items must be placed on the curb by 6:00 a.m. Items other than furniture, large bulk items and appliances must be placed in bags or boxes not larger than 35 gallons or heavier than 50 pounds each. Mattresses must be bagged. Five stickers in total will ensure that all the acceptable items placed on the curb will be picked up. Electronic items, yard waste, and hazardous materials will not be accepted. Items placed in your regular LRS refuse cars will not be collected. The LaGrange Park Fire Department will be hosting the annual Fire Department Open House to promote Fire Prevention Week. Join them on Saturday, October 12, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Fire Station Number 1 for this free event. There will be many educational and family-oriented activities, including demonstrations on cooking fires, fire sprinklers, practicing fire escape planning, and fire truck rides. The public is invited to learn or refresh some valuable safety skills and knowledgeable and knowledge while having fun. Refreshments will be served. Next item, celebrate Halloween with a safe and fun way to trick-or-treat and support your local businesses. Join hundreds of children and families for the 7th Annual Haunted Trolley Trick-or-Treat on Friday, October 25, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Trolleys will transport children and parents along 31st Street. The Village Market at the Park District offering free trick-or-treating. This event is sponsored by the LaGrange Park Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the village. The LaGrange Park Police Department, in coordination with the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, will host a National Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Village Hall. This program offers a safe, convenient, and responsible means of disposing of unwanted or expired medications. Please note, only drugs in pill form will be accepted, no liquids. Please empty all drugs from their original containers, bottles, or blister packs and place in a sealed baggie for drop-off. Can't make it to October 26? A permanent drop box is located in the Village Hall lobby with drop-off access during regular business hours of 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. And that is all I have for the administration.
Thank you, trustee Seidel. Building and Zoning Committee, trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the building department activities for August of 2019. 104 building permits were issued in August compared to 84 last August. 572 permits were issued year-to-date compared to 701 during the same period in 2018. Construction costs were slightly up for the month compared to last August. Permit fees collected were slightly down compared to last August. 152 inspections were conducted compared to 149 last August. Eight were not approved. Permit was issued and work began for the remodeling of the bistro at Plymouth Place. Fire inspections were completed for a new home at 345 North Loyola. Site work began for a new home at 31 Richmond. The new water line and sewer work was completed at 31st Street Shopping Plaza in the 700 block of 31st Street. The plans for the new Rosati's were also approved. Significant progress was made on the installation of the new patio, Matone, in particular redesigning the ramp to make it safer and better connecting to the parking lot. The signed permit for the new law office in the 1,000 block of 31st Street was also issued. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zora. Engineering and Capital Projects Committee, trustee Casero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items to report on this evening for the summer report of engineering and capital projects for August of 2019. The contractor for the 2019 street paving program, Jade Narduli Concrete, has continued work on the project. The final layer of asphalt has been placed on the 700 and 800 blocks of Wyola, 700 block of Spring, Jackson from LaGrange Road to Barnesdale Road, and Brewster from Spring Avenue to LaGrange Road. Driveways disturbed by curb removal have been replaced. All public sidewalks and intersections have been brought into full compliance with the current American with Disabilities Act requirements. All work other than landscape restoration is complete on this initial group of streets. The streets and close proximity schools were completed before school started to minimize the disruption to students and residents. Work will now shift to the remaining group of streets. All construction activities on the project are expected to be completed by late fall. Second item, work on the Raymond Avenue water main replacement project is almost complete. The contractor, Suburban General Construction, finished installing all the water main and has a few water services south of the 26th Street left to install. Construction activities in front of St. Louis de Merelac and Brook Park Schools were completed before school started in order to reduce the inconvenience and disruption to the parents and students. The sidewalks and driveways between 26th Street and 29th Street will be poured in early September. The balance of the work will be completed by mid-September with landscape restoration occurring when weather conditions moderate. Final item, bids were received for the 2019 alley improvement and off-street parking project. The low bidder was Triggy Construction, Inc., with a bid of $219,862.75. The alleys between Raymond Avenue and Lima, just north of 31st Street, will be reconstructed in concrete and new public parking spaces will be built on the west side of Beach Avenue north of 31st Street. The new parking stalls will be built using a decorative stamped and colored concrete design. Construction will begin in September and be completed this construction season. That's all I have to report this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Casero. Public Safety Committee, trustee Lotner.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple items to report this evening from the public safety area. First, the police department. Total number of crimes this year are exactly the same as last year at this time, with 209 reported this year compared to 209 last year. Traffic enforcement is at 3188 total tickets issued through August of 2019. Overall, police activity is slightly lower to last year with 5,873 total incidents reported through August of 2019 compared to 6,835 total incidents through August of 2019. It's actually about a 14% reduction, so it is a good reduction. The Adopt a Cop program for all LaGrange Park Schools, grades K through 6, will begin during the month of October. Staff is also working on scheduling lockdown drills at all LaGrange Park Schools. Staff has attended two webinars from LexiPol and are in the implementation phase with a LexiPol project manager. A probationary police officer, Antonio Garcia, has finally graduated from the Cook County Sheriff's Police Academy and has begun his field training phase, and we would again like to welcome him to the LaGrange Park family. On Saturday, October 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the lobby of the LaGrange Park Village Hall, the police department, in coordination with the DEA, will be hosting, as reported a little earlier, the Drug Takeback Event. Residents can discard expired prescriptions or over-the-counter medication by placing the pills in a baggie and disposing them into an approved container located in the lobby of the Village Hall. And as an important reminder, no needles, no pill bottles, or liquids will be accepted. A friendly reminder about securing one's personal property at all times, as we do every month, please lock your vehicles and your residences, especially during overnight hours. If you are going on vacation, please come into our LaGrange Park Police Department between the hours of 8:30 a.m. through 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and fill out a vacation watch card. And when you return, please come into the police department to sign the vacation watch card and let us know that you're home, and you'll see all the times that your residence was checked on. That is for the police area and for the fire department area for the month. EMS incidents this month totaled 157, and there had been 1,016 year-to-date as compared to 1,115 year-to-date in 2018. Fire rescue incidents this month totaled 43, and there had been 383 year-to-date compared to 319 year-to-date in 2018. During the month, personnel witnessed the flush of the new water main installed into the 31st Street Shopping Plaza, which will supply the new fire sprinkler system. They also took part in fire alarm testing for the Brook Park School additions and conducted a final sprinkler inspection for the home at 345 North Wyola. During the month, personnel participated in a number of public education and public relations types of events. These included our village's National Night Out, Westmont's Annual Cruising Nights, I should say Cruisin' Nights to properly position it, Fire Truck Night and Parade, the Forest Road Back-to-School Party, Western Springs Fire Department 125th Anniversary Parade and Picnic, and the Plymouth Place Employees Helping Employees Fundraising Picnic, where the fire chief took a turn in the dunk tank. Thank you, fire chief. New graphics were added to Engine 1211, replacing our reflective striping with our new color scheme and adding reflective safety chevrons to the rear. With the completion of the new construction, personnel conducted training at both the CSJ Complex and Brook Park School. Training including building familiarization walkthroughs, which help firefighters understand the construction types, the floor plans, and location of utilities and fire protection systems. Congratulations to firefighter/paramedic Matt Scott, who got married, and the wedding party stopped by to take photos at Fire Station 1. Division Chief Rick Renowski attended the meeting of the Regional Medication Distribution Plan Group, which is coordinated by the Cook County Department of Public Health. On August 24, a unique memorial gathering was held at Station 1 for retired firefighter Barry Frye. There were a number of retired and past members of our fire department present. And also during the month, Under Riders Laboratories conducted annual testing of our ladder truck. UL also conducted annual pump testing of all fire apparatus and biannual testing of all ground ladders. And the first home game for Nazareth Academy football was August 31, where the fire department again assisted with providing EMS coverage. And that concludes my reports from the public safety area this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Lotner. Public Works Committee, trustee Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The village brush collection continued the first full week of August. Multiple crews spent 122 hours making multiple passes through town collecting brush piles. Nearly 160 cubic yards of brush were collected. Phase 1 of the street striping was completed by superior striping from road construction projects for Harding Avenue, LaGrange Road, to the IHB tracks. Phase 2 of the striping will be completed at the end of the road construction season. Public Works participated for the first time in the police department's National Night Out to showcase some of their equipment and talk to residents about the services that we provide to them. Staff set up a live water main demonstration for residents to see how repairs on our distribution system take place. It was a great time for our staff and residents to get together, and we would like to thank the police department for the opportunity to participate in this year's amazing community event. Multiple water service lines were replaced during road construction area, all due to leaks. All of the village's own sections of these lines have been replaced with copper, and all fittings and taps have been replaced with lead-free brass to meet industry standards. Street sweeping continued, spending 56 day shift hours cleaning 69 miles of roadway. 23 yards of debris were collected making multiple passes through town. Hydrant flushing was completed on the east side of town and is currently being done on the west side of town to complete the program. Tree maintenance in July spent 52, August, 52 hours inspecting, trimming, and removing dead hazardous trees. Crews were outfilling potholes throughout town and finished multiple asphalt patches from water and sewer excavations. 121 daytime hours were spent on these patches using a combined 41 tons of surface mix and cold mix. 150 day shift hours were spent on building and ground maintenance around the public works facility, Village Hall, and along 31st Street. 77 day shift hours were spent in August on the maintenance of public works equipment and vehicles. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to residents' concerns. Water department operations, over 412 day shift hours and 36 and 1/2 overtime hours during the month of August were spent on maintenance and repair of sewer and water mains. 37,470,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield-North Riverside Water Commission. 1,481 water meters were read in Section 2. 55 monthly accounts and 29 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. 11 water and sewer inspections, 8 meter appointments, and 21 service calls were performed. 15 water bacterial samples were taken. 126 utility locations were identified prior to excavation. Two valve boxes were repaired. Three water service lines were repaired. Two shut-offs were performed. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Sheehan. Moving on, Finance Committee, trustee Messick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Financial update as of August 31, 2019. Fiscal year-to-date, general fund revenue is at 40% of the annual budget and about $80,000 lower than the prior year. Other local taxes are lower due primarily to the timing of cable franchise fee payments. Permit revenue was greater in the prior year by approximately $88,000, due mostly to a large permit issued for the Sisters of St. Joseph Project. Intergovernmental revenue is up over $131,000 compared to last year due to increased state shared revenue receipts. Charges for services are down about $30,000 due primarily to lower ambulance fee receipts compared to last year. Fine revenue is at approximately $30,000 lower than last year. There were some large court fine and local debt recovery receipts early last fiscal year. Past due fine collections are expected to increase this year with the implementation of the new ticket software system. And total general fund expenditures are within expectations at 34% of the annual budget and about $275,000 greater than last year. Police and fire expenditures are greater due in part to the timing of the quarterly LTAC contribution. The budgeted transfer of capital project funds is also $100,000 greater compared to the prior year. There are no action items, and that concludes the finance report.
Thank you, trustee Messick. Okay, moving on to other reports. Our village clerk?
No report, Mr. President.
Our village treasurer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our village engineer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our village attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
And Commercial Revitalization Committee, trustee Casero.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening I have three items to report an update on from the Commercial Revitalization Committee. 7-Eleven Strip Center. Work continues to progress at the 7-Eleven Strip Center. The facade improvements have been completed. The fire suppression system is anticipated to be installed in September. The property owner is also currently evaluating options for replacing and relocating the existing monuments signed for the property. Additional amenities such as benches, planters, etc. are also under consideration by the property owner. Matone. The exterior improvements at Matone Restaurant are nearly complete. Landscaping along the south perimeter has been installed, the new ramp and stair entrance have been constructed, and a new dumpster enclosure has been installed. Construction on the outdoor patio also continues. Panera. Panera has submitted applications for an interior remodel and exterior rebranding of their existing space. The rebranding includes all new signage on the north and west sides of the building, as well as on the Village Market multi-tenant directly sign. ITIA. This month, staff attended the 2019 Illinois Tax Increment Association Fall Conference in Chicago. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Casero. Committee and Collectors Report, motion to approve?
So moved.
Again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a couple items. I attended the IML Conference along with trustee Seidel and Sandy and Julia, and we had Deanne with us, who was our past executive secretary, and that was fun to be with her. And we attended a couple sessions, which were very informative. It's a great convention. Also, I was informed that our village manager, Julia, has been selected or nominated to chair the IML Managers Committee, correct? Help me.
Yes.
Yes, committee. Yes, the Managers Committee.
No offense, can I have?
Well, you're the only selection and the best selection, Julia, so it just goes to show again what we have in our staff and how they're looked at on the outside. So congratulations, Julia, on that selection. I attended the suicide prevention lecture last night with Sandy, and Kim was there, and the back two rows were filled with our first responders and our policemen. And Chief Kontos, thank you for putting this all together. It was very informative. Certainly, it's a subject that nobody wants to talk about, but something that we should talk about when it's necessary. And Chief Magus, thank you for your support and the support of all the first responders. Proclamation. We have one proclamation tonight. Fire Prevention Week 2019, whereas the village of LaGrange Park is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our village, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires. Whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Whereas residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety once a smoke alarm sounds, and whereas the village of LaGrange Park encourages all residents to increase the likelihood of surviving a fire by making an escape plan and practicing it at least twice a year. Whereas residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside into the home for people, pets, or things, teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them, and make sure everyone knows how to call 911 from a cell phone or a neighbor's phone. And now therefore be a proclaim that the village of LaGrange Park do hereby proclaim October 6 to the 12, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout our town, and urge all the people of the village of LaGrange Park to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or another emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the village of LaGrange Park's fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. One other item is the Business Outreach Program. For our residents' information, the village has a program where representatives reach out to the local businesses and visit them and get to know each of the businesses in the community and to better understand the needs of our business owners. In this program, we are reintroducing the effort with village trustees taking an active role, and they are assigned one business to visit each month. There they meet, go through a questionnaire, and answer any questions the business may have. Also, they provide business owners with information on village resources as well as information about our LaGrange Park Chamber. Some of the information in the packet provided to the business owners includes the Business Outreach Program instructions, the interview questionnaire, business contact sheet, e-brief signup sheet, LaGrange Park Chamber membership brochure, West Suburban Chamber Best of West Community Guide, The Rose Clippings latest edition, Park District Community Guide, inclusions at the request of the Commercial Revitalization Committee, Business Resource Guide, and the business card of our assistant village manager, Emily Rodman. So it's quite extensive, quite exhaustive, and it's something that the Commercial Revitalization Committee has decided to provide to businesses in our community, and I think it's a great effort, and I applaud the trustees for getting out and doing this and getting to know the businesses that are in our community. Next is public participation of non-agenda-related items. I have one more thing before I go to that. That's why Sandy's so good, see? I was given, staff needs to update the Engineering and Capital Projects Report regarding the timing of a project?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I thought it was really important to provide the village board with a clarification on the third report regarding the alley and parking spaces bid that was reported. It's the third item in the report. Just a quick update regarding this particular item. As you know, both of these items were put out to bid, and Triggy was the lowest bidder here. However, if you recall, back when the board discussed whether or not to include the two alleyways with the construction program this year for our roads, the understanding was that if funding was available in the road bonds, we would proceed forward in getting the two alleyways done. While we have the pricing, however, the concern here is we want to be absolutely certain that the funding is available within the road bond fund to move forward, and we just don't have that information right now. We know that we're close. We're constantly relooking at these numbers, but we will not know the final numbers of what funding is available through the road bond fund until about December, when those final estimates come back from the village engineer. So at this time, we are evaluating our options. We know that Triggy is willing to extend their pricing out 120 days while we find out what funding is available, but we have to weigh our options and see what we can do, because we really do want to get those alleys done. But it doesn't look like it's going to happen in September or this fall, and it will have to be pushed out to next year, unless we come up with some other option in the coming days. Rest assured, we will take the village board along on our journey in looking at our options and making sure we know what the best option is moving forward. But the first step is making sure that we have the funding available to be able to do these alleyways, and we just don't have that final information yet. So we don't feel comfortable with pursuing that work at this time. And so that concludes that clarification to that item.
Thank you, Julia.
Do you have any questions?
And since it was a clarification, any board members have any comments, questions for Julia? Okay, thank you, Julia. Okay, thank you, Julia. Okay, moving on, public participation of non-agenda-related items. Anyone care to address the board? Seen none, any new business? Seen none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great week.